Yeah, it's like a fireside. Oh, hey.
You got your mic on. All right. I think we're ready to start. So I will, I'm gonna, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Good morning.
I'm gonna introduce our speakers. I'm excited to welcome Rochelle Andre. And now I've lost my notes. Hang on.
That's all you need to know.
That's right. Rochelle Andre. She's a Dane County Supervisor for District.
11.
11, thank you. I should know because she lives across the street from me, which is how she ended up here. She knocked, she came like panfliending at my door and I asked her if she was busy. And so Rochelle has lived in Madison since 2013 and experienced our community through the eyes of a student, a young professional working in the nonprofit sector, an academic, and a volunteer. During the day, she's an advocate for safety net clinics in Wisconsin. And on her county board seat, Rochelle chairs the Public Protection and Judiciary Committee and serves on the Dane County Food Policy Council and Greater Madison MPO, which administers transportation-related funding and programs across the region. Cecily Castillo.
Oh, I don't, is this on?
Welcome. It should be on.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. So Cecily, thank you for coming. Cecily represents Supervisor District 7. And she is a public, she brings public policy experience to the table and we're lucky to have her. She worked as a prosecutor in Chicago. She worked as a policy director for Lieutenant Governor Barbara Lawton and has worked for Assembly members Gordon Hints and Kel DeRoyce as a policy director, sorry, as a policy director for the Women's Wisconsin Alliance for Women's Health. And she's now the Chief of Staff for State Senator Kel DeRoyce and works in the Capitol every day. Cecily is the first Latina woman to serve on the Dane County Board and serves on the Personnel and Finance Committee, Lakes and Watershed Committee, and the Henry Vilas Zoo Commission. I'm so excited that you guys are here to kind of hear perspective on county government. We don't always get to see that, so thank you so much for coming. Let's welcome them.
Thank you.
You guys, you guys can do the format however you want to do it.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the invitation, Emily. I do live right across the street from the household there, so I walk by most mornings with my dog. So I was constantly reminded for this event on Sunday. So I thought maybe we would just each share a little bit about ourselves, where our districts are, and then chat a little bit about what the county does. I think it's kind of the overlooked component of government. A lot of people pay attention to what your alder is up to and what the city council is doing, so we can just share a little bit about the county and then maybe talk about a few hot topics. And then plenty of time for discussion. We're relatively informal. So if you want to pick our brain on things, this is a good chance for it. So as noted, I represent District 11 on the county board. So if you are in that district, you would be from Whitney Way on the west side of my district over to about West High School. Mineral Point is my southern boundary. So we're just over the edge of it in Cecily's district here. And then I go up to the lake, including Shorewood Hills. So most of Hill Farms. And that's the neighborhood I live in, just at the corner of Regent and Seago. So just up the road here. I was elected to the board in 2020, so that was a weird time to get involved with local government because it was right in the middle of a pandemic. And the public health entity that was making mask rulings and all of those things is through the county. So I think our first little period on the board was very like public health oriented. And I do have a background in public policy, so and I spend my time on health policy in my day job, working on Medicaid and other kind of safety net access programs. And then as noted, I chair the committee for the county that is oversight for the 11 criminal justice-related departments in the county. So the Sheriff's Office, DA, courts, medical examiner, all of those things are kind of in my wheelhouse and what I spend my time on in the county board. Would you like to share anything else about what you do or what your district looks like, Cecily?
Sure. So I represent District 7. I live just down the way on Yuma. So my neighborhood is Nakoma, Westmoreland, going down the Monroe Corridor all the way basically to the zoo. My main committee is the Personnel and Finance, so I deal with the money. And then I also serve on the Lakes and Watershed Commission because that is of an interest area to me. Henry Vilas Zoo is in my district, so I serve on the Zoo Commission. And I will tell you that the majority of the questions I have from people are whenever there's new animals or animals that are leaving. Which I actually do know a lot about. So I go and meet with them about once a month. So if you have questions, when are we getting a giraffe? I can answer that question, sort of. You know, I really like being on the county board. For me, it was a way back to give to my neighborhood because during the pandemic, it just all came in, the work that Rochelle and the county board members were doing. I noticed that and I wanted to be a part of that.
Nice thing to say, Cecily. So I, I think that, you know, we knock on a lot of doors when we're in local office to, you know, let people know about what we're doing. And most people, when I knock on a door and I say that I'm on the county board, they think like school board. So I always want to start with like, what does the county do? And what is the county board's role in what the county does? So I describe that as the county works on issues from airport to zoo, from A to Z. So a lot of things that maybe are front of mind for you as a resident are city things like trash, zoning, police, fire, trash. Again, a lot of people have questions about trash and pickup. And so those are all city things. But the county mostly, a good portion of our budget is human services related, about a third of our budget. County has 2,200 staff, so a lot of people kind of doing things in the background, providing services and programming that maybe you don't see day to day. And a lot of those dollars are funds that come through the state. So state funding for county administered programs like safety net services, foster care, issues like that. Another good portion of our budget is like land and water resource management. So everything like lake levels, dredging, a lot of issues related to water quality, those are county things. We talked about the zoo a little bit. So the zoo is technically a county facility, which is very unique, and I'm sure you could talk a lot more about that. And then the airport, if you fly in and out of Dane County, is also a county-run facility. So we spent a lot of time on that. There's been some discussion recently about PFOS, these forever chemicals at the zoo, and that's hit the news a little bit. One of the hot topics that if you want to talk about a little bit today that comes up in the media a lot is the Dane County Jail. So I can talk about that and kind of what's been going on with that issue in particular, too. But that's kind of the range of the things the county does. We also run the county landfill. So where does your trash and recycling go? It ends up in the county landfill, which is over kind of on your way to Cambridge if you go out east. I would recommend a tour of the landfill if you've never been there before. It was like one of my favorite days in county government. I took about 30 constituents there. And our county landfill is one of the most like progressive landfills in the country. So we actually, and I get excited about this stuff. We actually have trash there that we generate renewable energy through and we sell it back to QuickTrip. And we power our winter snowplows with renewable natural gas that we produce at the county landfill. So there's some really cool sustainability things going on over there. Thursday morning tours, you gotta go. It's really cool. Last time I was there, I actually saw a graceful deer like frolicking atop the landfill. It was beautiful. What else does the county do that I haven't talked about yet?
Parks. Parks are big. So that's, that's kind of a fun part of being on the Lakes and Watershed Commission is that we try, when the weather is nice, we meet in different county parks and hear from the staff. And then that translates to understanding better, like what, what are we dealing with when it comes to like PFOS and other issues, safety of our lake beaches? I think that's an area that a lot of people get enjoyment out of and we're lucky that we get to help make that a good place for future generations.
So that's kind of what the county does. The county board, so we're the policymaking body at the county level of government. So if you're familiar with city council, we're that legislative body. But at the county level, there's 37 of us on the county board. It's kind of a large body. It's kind of a lot of cats to herd around, I think. And we each represent about 15,000 residents. You have to live in your district. So, you know, each of the areas that we represent, you have to live in that area. We serve two-year terms. All county board members are up for election this April. You know, make a plan to vote on April 2nd. Someone would fire me if I didn't make that plug here today. And they're all nonpartisan roles. So you would never see a D or an R next to someone's name. These local offices are, you know, strictly nonpartisan. And like I said, there's 37 of us and we're all up for reelection every two years. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts. What else have I missed in terms of how we function? Oh, all of our meetings are like open meetings. So we follow all those rules very carefully. Our, the full county board of 37 of us meets every other Thursday. So you can come to those meetings. You can watch them online. And then all of our committees are open, too. And they all have opportunities for public comment. That's always required at all of our meetings. So if there's a topic you want to learn about or speak on, all of those meetings, you know, welcome public comment, which I think is great. And during COVID, we went to a hybrid format. So all of our meetings, you can either join in person or virtually, which has been a really great, I think, benefit to residents that unfortunately we weren't doing before. You had to come and testify in person for meetings like that. So I think that's been a good public transparency change that we've made in the last few years.
Yep. And I think the interesting thing, because Dane County is so large and we have 37 members, is that we have to get familiar with so many different topics. Like there are things that I didn't even know were happening in our community until I joined the county board. I do really appreciate the work that was done during the pandemic to make the meetings hybrid because it means that there is easier input from the community. I'm a mom. I have two kids and I know what juggling schedules is like. And sometime in the evenings, you can't go downtown at 7:00 PM to sit in the Dane County Board. But if there is a topic of interest, then you can register and then watch this from home on Zoom. And I think that has been a big contribution to getting more engagement.
Agree totally. Emily, were there particular questions you want to tee up for us? Otherwise, we can, we can chat about things that we've been hearing about or just take questions from folks if you'd like.
Do you have a lot of people that do tune into your meetings? From the community or depending on the subject, I suppose?
Yeah.
Definitely depends on the subject. We have had multiple rounds of discussing the Dane County Jail and the funding. And I would say that those are some of the best attended meetings because there's a lot of people in the community that care about that.
So I think when there's a particular topic or when there's been, like especially news coverage on a topic, we, we get a lot of, I wouldn't still say a lot, but we, we do hear from people in our committee meetings. And if you're trying to understand, like where's the best point to provide input or engage on an issue, I would generally say it's at the committee level when it's moving through the process or kind of at the front end of an issue. Because once it's at the full board level for a vote, a lot of issues have already gone through multiple layers of discussion and a lot of, you know, subject matter experts have come in to provide input. So we do hear, you know, at the committee level, a lot on a hot topic when it comes up, like we were having this discussion about the agreement between the National Guard and the airport recently. So I know at the committee level, there were, you know, hours and hours of input and testimony on that topic. But we do often, you know, have meetings without a lot of people that provide testimony if there isn't one of those sort of hot button issues, I suppose.
Can you talk about the polar bear at the zoo?
Yes. So, oh, that was so sad. I have so many pictures of my girls with Bo. And Bo was needed for the breeding program. And so there's an organization, a national organization, that looks at the different animals in the zoo. And if you participate in it, then you agree that if it is important for your animal to go to another zoo for extending the, you know, keep animals from going extinct, then we need to give our animals and shift them over to other places. So right now, we only have one polar bear. There is a plan, like we are on the list to look at getting other animals perhaps this next year. And so that is the hope. But if you know why these shifts are happening, you can sort of make your peace with it. But you do get very attached to the animals. I mean, I know when Eddie the Giraffe, that was huge news. I heard from so many people on that. I was actually there the day that they were trying to get Eddie into the transport and Eddie was having none of it. The second day, he said, okay.
So Cecily, you kind of set the table. Is, are we gonna have another giraffe or?
Yeah, we are in the process of having a new facility built for the giraffes. So that was part of the calculation with moving our last giraffe, Eddie. That facility needed to have a lot of work to make it habitable for and safe for animals during the winter, especially. That was the calculation. So while the new facility is being built, move the giraffe out with the plan that we will then get additional giraffes. It won't be Eddie because Eddie's up in Green Bay and really happy apparently with a lady giraffe.
Oh, love.
There's been love.
And maybe one more, sorry about the specific zoo question. So the polar bear, did the polar bear go to Indianapolis? Am I remembering that right? Or went to another zoo?
I think, was it, it was either Indiana or Kentucky. I can't remember. But yes, so there was a giraffe, let's see if I can get this, or a polar bear that was, that was wild, that became part of their zoo. And usually that's not allowed as part of the breeding. But then there was something that happened where they gave special permission and that's where Bo went.
Okay. I'm Nancy Abraham. I sat at, I can't tell, what? You want it closer? Okay. I can't tell you how many Dane County meetings I sat at over the past, what, since about 1977? And primarily focused on health and human services. And of course, the, I can't think what it was called, the public and policy? What is that committee you're on now?
The Public Protection and Judiciary Committee, the kind of justice-related one?
Yeah. So those are the two main ones because of being involved with NAMI and having begun NAMI.
Great.
So there are concerns about the extent, I'm no longer doing that. I mean, it took thousands of hours, okay? But I'm concerned, as are others, and they're working on it, the extent to which, in a sense, funding has diminished for people with serious mental illnesses. And of course, the tie-in between people who have mental illnesses or serious mental health issues, as we say today, and the jail.
Yep.
And so when you say a third of the budget of the county, you know, goes to human services, that's how it's delivered in the state of Wisconsin. So people need to understand that our delivery system has put it in that way. And, and it's good in the sense that it's close to home, so to speak. But it means that advocates are constantly working, constantly, without pay, to try to help board members and other officials understand and be empathetic. And I'm not saying people are not, but I'm saying that's a constant issue. And it's then an educating of board members, right?
Yep.
So I'm kind of, rather than asking a question, I'm sort of giving an historical background where we worked to get a lot of resources. And in a sense, they have diminished. And there is this problem of, it's almost the only set of diseases where people are incarcerated rather than taken care of. Yeah. I mean, if somebody drops on the sidewalk with a heart attack, they're not driven to the jail. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for all your work with NAMI. Would it be okay if I share a few of the ways we're trying to kind of change that system a little bit? And, and we do, so in my day job, I work with NAMI and I'm on a coalition with Sita Deal, who does a lot of work. Yeah, she's phenomenal. So there are so many things that are messed up in the way our justice system works. And one of them is that for some reason, well, many reasons, we have come to treat behavioral health crises through the justice system, which is, makes no sense at all. So, and, and I say that specifically because there are a few projects that we're working on right now to try to make adjustments to that system. Some of them are big things that will take a lot of work to move the ship on. And some of them, you know, are incremental changes over time. First is that the county is very invested in building a crisis triage center. So what that is basically is right now, if someone is experiencing an acute behavioral health crisis, there are not a lot of options for that individual to go somewhere safely. And often it results in a Chapter 51 hold, which is like an emergency detention hold. And people end up in the jail because there aren't a lot of options for that individual or, or might get transported all the way up out of county to somewhere else. So one thing we're trying to do, and we've got capital funds for it and we're working through a very complicated state issue on this topic, is actually build a facility that is intended to treat behavioral health crises as a behavioral health issue and not as a justice issue. So this will include actual physical building that is operated by probably a nonprofit, some entity here in the county where people can go for up to 24 hours who are experiencing an acute mental health crisis, who will be stabilized and either return to home, refer to inpatient services, something else. There isn't really a state system that allows that right now. So we're working through reimbursement, we're working through licensure. We've actually got $10 million set aside in a capital fund to build that. So that's going to be a component of our crisis system. Item number two is currently within the city of Madison, run by the city in a partnership with the county and with Journey Mental Health, which is a very large provider of behavioral health services across the county that the county contracts with, is the CARES project, which when you call 911, which is a county service, and I recently had the opportunity to spend a day shadowing the people in the 911 center, it's a fascinating structure to see from the inside. Because, you know, you just pick up the phone and someone magically answers it. But all of the components that go into that are just absolutely incredible. They are absolutely doing amazing work there. When you pick up 911 and you say someone is having a mental health crisis, someone at 911 right now can triage that. And if it's an appropriate type of issue, they can call this CARES team, which sends a crisis-trained social worker with someone from Madison Fire Department, instead of someone, a law enforcement officer with a gun, to a behavioral health crisis. But we had to build that system from scratch. That didn't exist before. So the city built that. It exists within the boundaries of the city of Madison. But there isn't something like that throughout the rest of the county, let alone the rest of the state, please. But, you know, we're, we're working on that. And what we did in the last county budget is we put in funds so that local municipalities can access matching dollars to build out additional CARES teams and grow the geographic reach of that program. So within the next month or so, we're going to expect that existing CARES program to send these social workers to expand beyond the reach of the city of Madison. So that's going to be incremental changes over time. It's not going to be the exact solution we need for the rest of rural Dane County. So really figuring out what that medical mental health response looks like for a medical mental health crisis is what we're trying to build. The third thing is, and you noted, you know, we don't always put our funding into the root causes and in prevention. But we did provide a very significant increase to the contract with Journey in our last budget. So we gave or provided all of their crisis staff, the people who pick up the phone when someone is experiencing, you know, needs an audio triage or the people that actually do the crisis work on the ground. We provided up to a 15% increase for those wages so that we can keep those phenomenal staff around. Because right now, they kind of churn in and out because we don't pay as competitively as a lot of other roles do. So we need to keep people in those positions and pay people a professional wage who are doing that job. Finally, one thing I'm also really excited about, Sheriff Kelvin Barrett, he's been around for a few years now, took over for Dave Mahoney a few years back. He's a progressive-minded law enforcement official and I work with him very closely and have developed a lot of respect for him. They're doing some innovative things at the jail. So they're providing medication-assisted treatment at the jail now. They're actually helping people transition and make sure that if they're on like Vivitrol or some other substance that's keeping people from experiencing more acute like overdose and substance use disorders, they're administering those services in the jail now to keep people kind of on a path to recovery, which is more than we've been doing in the past years. So, so much more work that we need to do. But we are putting a lot of emphasis in trying to, to turn some of those systems back on their heads.
We do have a pretty progressive board at the moment. We do have elections coming up. So there will be some changes and new faces. But I firmly believe that from talking to the people that are running for those different positions, that the investment is still there, that this is what we're looking at doing. This was part of why the jail was such a contentious and tough topic for the board was because there were so many people on the board that wanted to ensure that we could reduce the size and invest in the services that you need to do to make that happen. You know, I come at this from having worked in law enforcement as a prosecutor. Chicago actually had a lot of federal dollars come in for some diversion programs that I got to see. Some of them were in the juvenile courts. I also worked in the domestic abuse courts there. And seeing how the investment in these programs changed the lens of the trajectory of people's lives, that it really does matter, but it's very, very difficult. It doesn't happen overnight and it is very expensive. And so I think we're invested to see in these programs through. But this is something that we're going to have to keep chipping at.
And I think part of the complexity is that in the justice system, we've got policymakers, thank goodness. We've got people like Cecily who have, you know, a lot of experience in this area. And we have judges. And it's very, I think, hard for like laypeople just going about your lives to understand when you see someone on the ballot, how does that judge, you know, think about discretion? And, you know, what are their philosophies when they're working with juveniles who have, you know, experienced with car thefts? Or, you know, how do we really look at the root causes of what's getting people into the justice system? So we've got all these other officers, you know, the judges, the sheriff, the DA, people who are elected. And then a lot of staff who have a lot of discretion on a lot of these issues. So we set policy, but, you know, have limitations to how far we can go with those policies, too.
I had a question. When you talk about your 37-member board and that is a big group, one of the things we talk about in this group a lot is sort of dialogue and kind of understanding different perspectives and being welcoming. And I'm wondering if there is a, I can't say it better than a rural-urban divide on the board or at least a rural-urban perspective that you guys notice as people who live in the city. Are there, do the, do the people who are sort of out in the county have a different set of priorities that you kind of notice and navigate?
I think they do come at it with a different lens, but there is a lot of common ground that can be found. I work on the Lakes and Watershed Commission and, you know, there's one, one individual I'm thinking of that's on our, our board, that's on there, that comes at this from a very rural perspective. But there's a lot of overlap in what we want to do. You know, he brings the conversation of what do farmers think about this? What, how do you talk to people and get them to buy in on some of the nutrient reduction work that we're doing? And, you know, I think that's healthy to have some other perspectives on the board. I work on the state level and that's pretty broken at the moment. But, you know, you hear from all kinds of people in that area. And I think that, you know, as long as we're willing to listen to our colleagues and have respectful conversations, then we're all better for having different perspectives. I mean, you're on PPJ, so you have, you have an interesting mix of people. So you get to hear a lot about that.
Yes, very much so. And I, it is, I would say it's a thing. And certainly, the districts look very different. So I was out in the east side of Dane County yesterday in the area of Marshall and the And the, the volume and the concentration of like social services in those areas are just very different than what you find in the city of Madison. So the, the types of resources needed can look different or the way they function. Like even with that example of the justice system, kind of crisis for behavioral health issues, the, the, the solution that works to solve a problem with a denser population in the city is different than what might be needed in a rural area of the county, even if the, the desired result or the goals are the same. So someone in, who represents a rural district in, in Dane County, like I can, I'm visualizing the map right now. And she literally represents almost like a, a fifth of the whole county land-wise. Whereas, you know, Cecily and my districts are like this big compared to hers. So it does come up, but we do, you know, often entertain kind of solutions that might be a little more rural calibrated. So I'm thinking, for example, there was a housing program that we funded. And we have like an affordable housing development fund. So we try to incentivize developers to, you know, do the kind of stuff we want to see. Because certainly housing is one of the biggest issues that everyone agrees is a big problem for the county across all levels of income. And we did a study and understood that the way that homelessness looks in rural Dane County is often people being doubled up, living with someone else, staying with them, not necessarily someone who is outside unhoused without a roof over their head, but someone who doesn't have stable housing. So we developed a program to specifically target needs for people who are doubled up, more of a rural issue than it might be perhaps in more of an urban area.
I'm wondering about the updates on the PFAS issues, both in drinking water, but then in the watershed. And it's my understanding that a majority of the big PFAS problem is from military. I might be wrong, but that's my understanding. If that is the case, is there any talk about holding the military or government accountable for paying for the cleanup? Because cleaning up PFAS is very expensive.
I'm going to start with that one, Cecily.
Yeah, the PFAS issue has been, you may have read parts of it in the news. So we have the National Guard that is housed at our airport. And part of their firefighting foam, like what's inside there, it has PFAS. And so if that is sprayed on the ground, then it can leach into the water. And through all the training exercises, we do have a problem here where it is in our community. I mean, honestly PFAS is pretty much everywhere now. But we know like one of the originations of where, you know, it came from. And that is the firefighting foam. And so in order to have them at our airport, they have that material there. And that became a discussion on the board about what do we do with our contract with the National Guard? What do we do in order to ensure if there is something that happens and this material is used, how does the cleanup and who pays for that? It's a really complicated issue because the federal contracts, as you can imagine, like this is, this is not the easiest thing to negotiate. And so one of the things that we have asked for as a county board is to encourage them to prioritize non-PFAS materials so that we're looking toward the future. Our understanding is that that material is being made. However, there's a waitlist in order for you to be able to get that, you know, to your facility. And so that's where things currently stand with Dane County, is that we are watching this. We have, you know, put into language for a resolution that was passed to ensure that we want to prioritize the non-PFAS. That being said, at this current moment, that's not available to us. And that's a source of frustration, both to people in the community and to many of the supervisors.
And for the past contamination, there is a formal recognition by the federal government that they have a responsibility. So there's a, there's a cleanup plan. There's an actual agreement, a documented thing, that the federal government has engaged with the state DNR. There's like all these parties that are a component of this contract, that basically they have responsibility to help with the cleanup of the past contamination. And there's a lot of new provisions about public reporting of the PFAS levels and where that process is at, that just in the last few years, I think the county and the public has rightfully been very interested in understanding that more. So it's sort of like we have something about the past contamination, that there's agreement, needs to be remedied. And there's actually a, like a super fund at the federal level. Because this is like a multi-billion dollar project. It's the scale of something that we could never do ourselves, nor should we be responsible for that. So there's responsibility for doing that cleanup. And then there's the question of like moving forward, how do we ensure there isn't any future risk? And even right now, the way the National Guard is providing the firefighting services, they're now doing that in the interim while we wait for the non-PFAS foam through a closed system where even when they do the training exercises, that water entirely in the foam is not getting into our watershed anymore. They're using basically like a closed system that restricts any of that contamination. They started that about a year ago.
Yeah. And I mean, this is, this is one of those issues that has, it's on multiple levels of government. So yes, we're dealing with it on the county level. I can tell you, working in the state Capitol, this is a huge issue on the state level. And we're dealing with federal funds. So it all interplays. Because PFAS has become so widespread, it is now garnering the attention of people that live in different areas. Like it's not just an urban issue. And so I do see legislators in the Capitol talking about this, that four years ago were not. I think it's a sad commentary that it takes that point to do the proper work and the cleanup and investment, but that may help shift the conversation.
So I have a more basic question. You said that if you're interested in providing public input on an issue, it's best to do it when things are kind of early in the process. How do we find out what those things are? How do we find out what kinds of things you're discussing in committee that we might be interested in?
I love that question. Number one, I would suggest, you know, know who your county board supervisor is. So there, you know, if you go online, just search for Dane County Board, there'll be a little search option. Many of us have like a blog that we send out information to our constituents or say, here's something coming up in a week or two. You know, want you to know about it. I want your input on it. Otherwise, we do use this system that has all of our legislation, all of the committees, and that's all open to the public. And you can actually set alerts through that system for keywords. So if you're really interested in medical examiner or giraffe, like you could search for those things and like get alerts to come up.
Just get my phone number. It's fine.
Yeah. Or, you know, having a, you know, we're pretty accessible. So if you, at least for me, for my constituents, if I know that like I met someone down the street who was really interested in cross-country ski trails recently, like if I see that issue across my radar, I'll let him know about it. And there, you know, you could spend your entire day just watching county meetings and that's probably not what you want to do.
I was going to say, I actually couldn't, but...
Right. Right. Neither can I.
Perhaps shouldn't.
Yeah. That would be a good use of time. But, um, so connecting with your, your board supervisor to, you know, let them know about your interest in a topic, you know, setting an alert through that system so you can track if things come up. And then if something does come up in the media where you're like, oh, I do want to comment on that. I do want to know, you know, reaching out to the committee that is purview over that thing or to your supervisor on that thing would be, I think, helpful steps. What else am I saying?
I think reaching out to your county supervisor is a great first step. I mean, everybody in here, I think Rochelle and I are your supervisors. We're happy to answer questions. Or I keep a spreadsheet of topics that people are interested in so that when something comes up, I double-check it and make sure I send an email just in case there's, there's an interest in a topic. So I'm happy to add you to it.
And then a lot of the boards and commissions outside of like the big oversight committees do have public members on them. So, you know, if you're really interested in getting more involved, finding a board or a commission that aligns with your interest area and you can put your name forward to be appointed to that board or commission if you really want to dig into something more in the weeds. Thanks for the question. Yeah. Um, there, oh yeah, go ahead. We, we can talk, there, there's like change in the leadership in county executive too. So if you have questions about that, we could talk about that too.
I was just wondering if you can comment generally on the, um, the budget and how things look? In a sense, I haven't kept track of that, but I'm assuming money plays a lot into programs, how that is looking for the future for our county.
Yes, finance committee member, Castillo.
Well, I mean, we, we were a little spoiled with the ARPA dollars that were coming in that allowed us to invest in some great infrastructure that is not going to continue in the future. So we have to make more difficult choices going forward. Right now is about the time that everybody's starting to look at budget and discussions of what the priorities are because we will start putting forward the plans in the summer. And we do our budget for the county in the fall. And so September, October, November, that's when things get, get really heavy. I mean, I think the, the bigger buckets are going to remain the same. We have a, a committee called the Health and Human Needs Committee. I used to serve on that one, and that is where the bulk of the spending goes through. I think we're going to be looking at housing. We're going to be looking at mental health. We're going to be looking at environmental issues. What those look like, we have to figure out and prioritize, you know? I mean, as things that come through the committees, we have these meetings where the members of the public or the heads of organizations can come and tell us about their projects and why that funding is crucial for our community. And I find those to be, you know, really helpful in getting to know like what, how do these programs actually work? When you read something on a paper, it's a budget item. It's just words. But when you have people from Journey come in and tell you what they spend their days doing, it really kind of brings it home. So.
And budget 101, at the county level, we have an operating budget. So that's staff, you know, programming dollars. That was about $850 million last year. So we, you know, it's a significant budget, which always feels scary. You know, we vote on that one night in October. You know, we spent almost a billion dollars over the course of the year in the county. And it's not, most of it is not tax dollars. So it's mostly state pass-through, but some of it is your tax dollars. So we have an operating budget, so a staff and programming. And then that's the most, the big part of the budget. And then we have a capital budget, and that's around $200 million. And that's building stuff, buying stuff, physical materials. So together, that's our whole budget. There has been media coverage about the situation the city is in being very precarious. And that's a different than the county because the city really, really relies on tax levy. Most of the city's budget is tax revenue. Only a small portion of the county budget is tax revenue. And the way our budget works is we, there's a levy limit that's set by the state. So we can only spend so much on any given year in operating dollars, on that operating budget. And that is determined based on a complicated formula that the state sets, primarily on new building growth in the county every, every given year. And we do spend to the top of our levy limit every year. So we max that out, but the same limit does not apply to capital dollars. So that's where we have more flexibility in our budget any given year. And, you know, we haven't heard the word from the county executive or the finance team that we're in big trouble for the county budget. We just need to make decisions within that levy limit, which does grow each year because Dane County is growing so drastically. We need to make decisions about how to spend that new growth on any given year. Thanks for the question.
I'm just wondering, if Wisconsin were to finally take Medicaid expansion, how or would that help at the county level in the area of health and human needs as an example? Thank you.
That's a great question. So I'll take a stab at it and see if you want to add anything from HHN. So, you know, when, when people ask about Medicaid expansion, so that's essentially asking to take federal matching dollars to increase the eligibility for people on the state Badger Care Program or Medicaid. So Wisconsin is now one of just a few states, I think it was eight last time I checked, who has not taken the federal Medicaid expansion. And that's been a really contentious issue in the Capitol since the ACA, the Obamacare passed about 10 years ago. The way that works on the ground is that some people who otherwise would be covered need to use like Obamacare marketplace plans or like the exchange to get commercial insurance, but through the marketplace. Some end up uninsured, who otherwise, you know, would have some sort of coverage, either through the marketplace or through an ACA plan or through Medicaid. I, I haven't seen an analysis that says exactly what that would mean for county units of government, but it would mean more dollars in the state system to spend on medical services. So to me, at least, when I think about that topic, when we don't take that, those dollars at the state level, which is again, a, a state decision that the legislature would need to make, that the governor has supported, it means that we're leaving money on the table that we could be using to do more behavioral health services, to up the wages we pay people. Because all of those services we fund at the county level are coming through the state. So it would mean more money in the system for us to do the type of work that I think is important. But an exact analysis of what that would look like, I haven't seen.
Yeah, we don't know what the numbers and the dollars look like on that. But if you reduce the need for services, then that does free up the ability to work on other facets of things. I mean, I think about this a lot with not just the Medicaid expansion, but like paid family leave and issues like that, that like help people live better lives, then they are not needing to seek resources for the very basic things from their local governments.
I think I'll mention, since I think there's confusion about it, just an unrelated topic. There's, so county executive Joe Parisi indicated that he is retiring this May. So, you know, people have had questions like, what does that mean for the county? Like what is this election cycle? So as noted, all the county supervisors were up for reelection every other April. So will be on ballots a month from now. Those counties, the county executive is like the mayor of the county. So he's like in charge of, you know, administering the day-to-day function of the county. They serve four-year terms. What that means is so, and his term isn't technically up until May of next year, May of 2025. But he's done May of this year. So he's ending a little early. So there will actually be a special election for that seat, the county executive, this November, you know, same time as your presidential ballot. So there will be a special election for that seat. And then that person, or whoever wants to run to, to be the permanent county executive, will have to run again the following April 2025. And whoever wins that race will be in that four-year term for the subsequent four years through 2029. So it's just a little bit confusing because you're going to see that on your ballot multiple times coming up over the next year. And that position is really important. They kind of set the public agenda for where the county is going. They are in charge of hiring and firing. The county board does not have that oversight. There was some contention about some proposals for department heads that the county executive put forward last year and this year that the county board didn't agree with. So we shot down some of those candidates for things. But we don't have any control over, like if, if someone wanted to fire the zoo executive director today, the county board doesn't have oversight over that. The county executive ultimately does.
Rochelle, is there likely to be a primary for that November?
There is. There will be for sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, good point. So there's four people that have so far indicated that they're running for county executive. There'll be a primary for that race this August, top two.
November.
Yeah, we'll go to November. Well, I guess, yeah. And, right.
Yeah. So you have primary in August. The full election for the top two vote-getters from the August ballot will be in November. Then that person will be your county supervisor with another election in April. Or sorry, county executive. Do you want to talk a little bit about the process from now, like from May, until that November point with the election?
Oh my gosh, yes. It's going to be so confusing. So since, since Joe Parisi is done in May, but is, you know, that election isn't until November, what happens then? Like there's this gap. And it's actually the county board chair, who's a supervisor like Cecily and myself. He is, so right now it's this person named Patrick. And he's like an elected, one of our peers that we have said is kind of going to corral us and, you know, has more of a full-time position. That person in May, whoever that is, will have the ability to appoint an interim county executive to be doing that work from May until November. appoint an interim county executive to be doing that work from May until November. And then we'll have that special election person from November till May of the next year, and then the permanent person for May for the next four years. So it's definitely a little bit of a transition, sort of complicated time. And we're going to have at least 11 new supervisors on the county board. Out of the 37 of us, there's 11 people who are not running for reelection, and an additional five or six incumbents who are being challenged. So we could have significant turnover and a new county executive, and we have three new department heads for the county in the last.
So we all have to sort of just take a breath and dig in, and it is going to be a bit of chaos for a bit.
Managed chaos, of course.
So that really says there needs to be better communication to the public about what's coming up. Not saying who should be elected, but, and really, for an old person like me, it's like the day before, now I'm overemphasizing that, there's an election. Then you see printed information. I mean, is there a way that we could get better information earlier?
Yeah.
And this whole year is going to be really problematic. Like, what is going to drop through the sieve that shouldn't?
Yeah.
And what's going to come in that shouldn't?
There's definitely going to be some stuff. I think the League of Women Voters, number one, does frankly do a phenomenal job of getting ahead on those races and providing nonpartisan information. I even saw a newsletter of theirs come through on the constitutional amendments that are proposed on the ballot, where, like, I don't even know what those questions are asking about. Like, I need to figure it out, frankly. So I think there are some really solid local resources, but, you know, you got to find them. You got to know where to look, and it's challenging.
Yeah, the League of Women Voters does a really good job of collecting, like, from all levels of people that are running. Like, I filled mine out, that they ask questions, and I tell you what, how I feel about different topics. That is going to be in place for all of the different positions. It is, it is on the early side, just from the county executive race. It is a little bit on the early side, where you're going to start seeing a little bit more about platforms and forums and debates that will be happening. Our community is better than a lot of others for actually having that available to be able to watch. And even if you can't make it on the day it happens, you can re-watch it and see what the candidates say about the different topics you care about.
And we do, you know, we take it pretty seriously to separate out any, like, political campaigning. So like, you won't hear us, like, in this kind of venue, talk about, like, candidates, or, you know, who we're supporting, who we're not. So we try to separate that out from, like, the policy work. But I agree, it's really hard to know what's going on, unless you're, like, plugged into specific resources. Yeah.
So, yeah. So the women, the League of Women Voters, what's, so do they send a, are they sending emails out, or are they just...
They do, yeah. I mean, I'm on their email list. They send out information every weekend. They are, you know, very strictly nonpartisan, like voter education efforts. And their Dane County chapter is really strong. They've got some awesome staff doing really good work. So they send out, like, questionnaires, like Cecily noted, where candidates for all different offices who will be on the ballot, like even the judges who will be on your ballots this April, will complete information for them. And they'll send out those publications. They have a lot of information on their website. I would recommend that as, them as a terrific resource.
Sometimes candidates don't respond to their questionnaires, and I think of that as disqualifying in my own mind.
And the League of Women Voters reminds us that, that it won't look good if you don't answer our questions.
So maybe we're getting closer to, this is great, we're getting closer to time. Maybe one question, like, if you think about the last year, what are the issues that drew the most public engagement in your, either in your board or committee roles, that, you know, some, I don't know, sometimes that's surprising, what people get really excited about, and then you, then you pass a billion-dollar budget and no one comes. So, yeah, I just wonder what the, what are the hot topics from your perspective?
I will talk about the jail. So that's, that's probably the one that in the years I've been on the board has been most challenging, for many different reasons. So right now, the county has three different county-run jail facilities. There is one over by the Alliance Energy Center, that is basically a minimum-security facility for people who are on work release. So individuals who have an electronic monitor, who go off to their, out and about for their day, and then return to that facility at night. That's what we call the Huber Center. And then there's a medium-security facility and a maximum-security facility, actually both right downtown. If you ever go to the City-County Building on MLK Drive, right there by the Capitol, you'll notice there's a public safety building that says that on the outside. And then on top of the City-County Building are actually two floors of jails. So if you look up at that building, you can see the jail, which I never knew about until I started paying attention to this. So there's those three facilities. Now during COVID, that first facility I mentioned, the work-release space, was closed because there was a policy decision made with the sheriff to say, you know, are we really promoting the outcomes we want to see by having people come and sleep here at night, when we could keep people in their home setting and, you know, still monitor people? You know, are we going to have the same results there? And it turned out, things are looking pretty good with that test. So we closed that facility. No one is going to that anymore, but we still have these two facilities downtown. One of those facilities was built in the late 1950s. If you have ever been in it, it does look like Alcatraz. Like, it looks decrepit and unsafe and uninhabitable. It's a, it's a big risk for the county, and mostly for the individuals and the staff that are in it every day. It's not a successful place for people, and it's not a safe place. So there's long been an interest in closing that facility in particular. That's sort of agreed upon, that that facility sucks. Like, we need to do something better about it. It's been a long time that that discussion has been underway. So that was, you know, that was sort of the agreed situation. And then over time, there were various proposals to build one thing or another, build on top of this, build on top of that. So there was a lot of rigmarole about that. But, long story short, the boards over the last few years reached some consensus that indeed, that facility, that decrepit component, will be closed, and we will build a new facility adjoining it, which will be more updated to, you know, modern standards. It'll have much more space for medical and mental health services. It will be much more of a kind of group facility setting, you know, not cages with bars, you know. And none of that in itself transforms the justice system. So, you know, we need the levers in place to look at system solutions to keep people out of jail. But we're, we basically went through the last hurdle to actually get the funds together to build that facility next to the current medium-security facility downtown. We, it's a really big project. We've authorized $179 million to do it. You know, it's very significant. But that is moving forward. So we have a project out to bid. They're going to start putting shovels in the ground this fall. It's going to take a few years to build it. And currently, we do have individuals who are Dane County residents, who we are currently transporting to three other counties' jails to house about 60 to 80 people a day. It's not a really good use of our resources to do that. We want to bring those people back. We want them closer to home, and we want a facility that is as rehabilitative as possible, making sure that people don't leave the jail worse than when they came in. So that project is underway. The last funding hurdle has been passed. You know, there could still be surprises in the project, since it's been contentious for so long, and it's a really, really big project. But that is now moving forward.
Yeah, I think the topics that I hear most about, the zoo, the jail, and I hear from, from different perspectives, too, on that. Some that did not want us to invest in the jail, others that, you know, felt that we had to invest in it. So it was, it was good for me to hear from, from everybody. I also hear about our parks quite a bit, because people really enjoy using them and want to see them expanded and maintained. So.
How do you find time to do your jobs and live a normal life with all you have to do?
I don't know. So I do Capitol work, which, in fact, I have very large bags under my eyes at the moment, because we are right at the end of session. So things are pretty intense for the Senate right now. Our last day will probably be Tuesday. So that is a big time investment. And then I spend my time on county board. My meetings are either early in the morning or in the evening. I have to select my committees carefully because of my work and with my kids. I can't do middle-of-the-day meetings. That just can't, can't happen. But I also do real estate on the side to allow me to be able to work in the Capitol. So I do quite a bit of juggling. I have to be really careful with my calendar, and I, I think it's worth it at the end of the day, because I feel such satisfaction when we do something on the county board, that I don't want to give this up. Like, I love this work. And so I think just making it happen, and I have a family that understands what this is. My girls have been inundated with what politics and the need to vote and why this matters. So they understand when I'm not there to say goodnight to them, because I'm at the Dane County Board talking about the jail, what I'm doing. And so it's worth it.
It is a heck of a balancing act. And it does mean that, you know, I, I do feel like I need to put guardrails on about, you know, doing a few things well, instead of trying to do 50 things so-so, meh. But our budget season is a hard time. So like October, November, you know, I probably put in 20, 25 hours a week on county board meetings alone, let alone like talking to people and seeing what's going on. And I would say most people on the board do have a full-time day job. We've got a few retired folks, you know, thank you for doing that. Or, you know, people that maybe work a part-time job. But it is service. You know, we all get into it because we're, we're dedicated to seeing things work better for our constituents, our community, at the end of the day. But it is a balancing act, and it means that we probably do focus most on what we hear from our constituents. So, you know, it's really a matter of understanding what, what the people we talk to care about, focusing on those issues, you know, bringing whatever political or professional experience we have, you know, where can we be most effective, focusing on those areas. And, you know, we do earn kind of like a stipend each month, but it's not, you know, like a full-time paid job. And sometimes people mistake that and think that you can just, like, go to a meeting at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday, when, you know, we can't typically do that. So we need to kind of have expectations and clarify those as much as possible. But, you know, focusing on the stuff that we really care about keeps me most motivated when, when we know that we're doing something good.
Thank you both for doing that juggling act on our behalf. And thanks for coming today. We really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you for the invite. I did leave cards in the back by Emily, so if anyone wants to connect, please do.
Oh, I'll set mine out, too. You're more prepared.